Hello, everyone, and welcome. Happy Monday. Today is Monday, March 3rd. We are starting our budget workshop for Sanford School Department in the city chambers, third floor, City Hall Annex, again, Monday, March 3rd at 4:32. Would someone like to call a meeting to order?
I'll make a motion to call this meeting to order.
I second it.
All in favor?
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. We're back with our next budget workshop. We had a little bit of a curveball that was thrown to us last week when we received our renewal quote for health insurance for our largest carrier, for the largest group in the Sanford School Department. That caused us to have to go and reevaluate. And we also spent last Wednesday's school committee budget workshop digging deeper into that. So, this evening, we're going to recap and update when it comes into health insurance and the impact on that. Our hope is that we're going to be able to land on approving a budget. We have to, actually. We have a school committee regular business meeting following this meeting at 6 o'clock. One of the agenda items there is for us to approve the 2025-2026 school budget. We need to approve that because tomorrow night is the first city council budget workshop. That's at 5:00 PM, right here in the city hall chambers. That's from 5:00 to 7:00. That evening will be divided up. The city will have an hour to give an overview of their budget, and the school department will have an hour to give an overview of our budget. Tuesdays in the month of March are going to be city council budget workshops. So, a week from tomorrow, on March 11th, the city is going to present their budget more in depth on March 11th at 5:00. The following Tuesday, March 18th, the school department will -- we will present our budget in that evening in more depth. And following that workshop is a city council meeting, and that's when the public will also have their -- the budget will have a public hearing. It will be on March 18th. The goal would be for the city council to approve our school budget, shooting on April 1st, Tuesday, April 1st. We might have the ability to go to Tuesday, April 8th, if we need to for that. So, that's an overview of where we are. Coming right out of the gate this evening, if you want to go to the next slide.
Ryan? It's not working.
We'll come right off and start the meeting with some other adjustments that we're recommending this evening. The first one is reducing the SRTC budget in the supplies and equipment, a total of 17,000. Director Matt Peterman's been working on that through all the different funding mechanisms to be able to do that, and has the ability for us to absorb that, knowing that we're all trying to trim our budgets as thin as we can. He's recommending 17,000. That is the amount that's going to be impacted on the Sanford School Department budget out of SRTC for that. That's number one. And then the second one is coming out of our curriculum budget in the area of an assessment. We were waiting on seeing what the state was going to be doing with their assessments going forward. They've kind of committed to NWEA for another year. So, with that, we're able to shave off $6,000 there. So, that'll be a total of $23,000 for that. That would be a recommendation tonight. Any further discussion on that, or is that something we can look at to try to continue to reduce the budget? All right. I see head nods.
Well, I would just say thank you for --
Yep. Yep. That's very helpful. Next, I'd like to go into health insurance. So, if you remember, when we built this budget, in there, we had a placeholder for our Harvard Pilgrim health insurance. Just a reminder, that covers our bargaining units for our teachers. It covers our food service. It covers our administrative assistance. It covers our miscellaneous employees. It covers most of our employees. We do have two of our smaller bargaining groups, the custodians and the administrators that belong to MEA. But so, for Harvard Pilgrim, we knewing that our claims were running very high, and we were not trending well. And so, with that, we knew it was going to be coming in with a high renewal. We did have a workshop, the school committee did, back in January with Shelley Paulus to really go in depth on that. So, we were cautiously optimistic. So, we built that at 17.5%. The impact on the budget was that's $1,335,191. Well, the renewal did come in, and it came in higher than 17.5. It actually came in at 23.87. And that was something that we announced -- we received it on the 20th, and we announced that at our school budget -- school committee budget workshop last Monday. And so, that would be an increase to the budget of 400, just under 500,000, 486,949. So, that would raise our total of $1,822,140. So, we were looking at our various options. One of the options was, what would Harvard Pilgrim give us for a rate if we did not go out to bid? So, this was a no-bid rate with that. We did receive that late last Friday, and that bid came in at 19%. So, that came in at 19%, which knocks down the health insurance increase by $372,463. Okay? When we have the no-bid rate, other things that we're looking at is there are parts of the plan that we can come back and do -- make changes to the plans as well. We wouldn't make changes to any of the negotiated agreements in terms of employer and employee share, but as far as particulars of the plan, those could be some adjustments, they call them decrements, that we could be making to help that. That's something that's very common in the industry. As we were doing our research, what we were finding was, we were in need of making some of those changes because the marketplace outside of us was also making those changes. So, we worked with Acadia Benefits through Harvard Pilgrim, and they were able to come back and give us some decrements that were right around pharmacy, pharmaceutical costs, and also co-insurance costs with that. And we worked really hard last Wednesday, really digging into to say, okay, we have these, but what are the impacts going to be? Obviously, we want to make sure that our impacts are considered for that. Obviously, we're trying to reduce costs, but we also want to balance that with the impacts. So, we had, out of that, there were different alternates, different options for us to choose. We looked at, there were, out of the three options, we landed on three. We did share that information with the Sanford Federation of Teachers, their union. And as always, through all of this health insurance, we've tried to be partners in terms of looking at, trying to balance providing the best coverage for employees, but at the same time, doing our best to minimize costs. That's been challenging, just because if you look at health insurance costs over time, they have really increased, and obviously, that's a benefit to our staff, that they really want to be able to try to do their best to be able to hold on to. So, it's a collaborative process. We did work through, out of the decrements, there were two decrements around prescription drugs, co-insurance, by being able to see how there would be some alternate prescriptions that would have to be recommended to be able to do that. So, I think we're comfortable moving ahead with the decrements, numbers two and three. The total of those come out to $153,156 in savings for that. Decrement four, there was some concern, as we came back working with the SFT, that in terms of what that decrement was doing was looking at increasing co-pays, but it was really around emergency room visits. And so, I think the intent was to make sure that if people were utilizing the emergency room, they were utilizing that for emergency room situations, and not overusing it when it shouldn't be, where people could go to a quick care, an urgent care, for example, in doing that. So, there are different things that were put forward. Part of that was increasing the co-pays. There was also another part of that that put it to a percentage basis, right? So, it was also now, in terms of cost, the employee would be on the hook for a percentage of the overall expense. And so, by doing that, there was a concern that, hey, there are people who have to use the emergency room. It's what it's for, and when they're able to come back and do that, they want to make sure they can do that in a way that's not going to really increase, depending on what the emergency room visit was. You could be looking at a significant cost beyond those co-pays. And so, initially, that decrement was looking at just under $68,000. So, we did remove that one, but we did reach out to Harvard Pilgrim with kind of, wait a minute, let's try to get away from that percentage piece, and what would we be able to do if we were just addressing the co-pays, for example, increasing the co-pays? Because one of the things that will have to happen, not only with this decrement, but the others, we really want to be able to educate our staff so that they can come back to be able to understand the changes and the impacts. And so, we did receive late notice this afternoon from Harvard Pilgrim by us looking at those co-pays and doubling those. It would come back to save us 0.3%, which would be about $20,368. So, it's not the 68 we were looking for, 20. This is still unofficial, that we haven't had opportunity yet to share this with the teachers' union, okay? But I do think that there, as we look at it this evening, there is that possibility for us to be able to come back and have some more savings. The other piece is our options right now. Our options are, we have the no-bid renewal coming from Harvard Pilgrim. We could, if the school committee desires, we could go out to bid. We could go out to bid to be able to look at what other companies may be able to come in to see if they can come back to give lower rates. There's no guarantees to that. If we did that, the Harvard Pilgrim rate that we currently have at 19% would then go back up to the 23.87. And then, we'd be rolling the dice to see how are we -- obviously, they would want to look at all of our information, all of our claims history, for them to be able to come back in to see if we could have a bid to get that down. That's one option. The other option is, we could accept the no-bid, and we could go and look at the various decrements that we've talked about to see if they come in, and that gives us an idea of what we're locking in. The other thing we could do is, we could also go back to Harvard Pilgrim and say, you gave us a no-bid of 19%. We could come back to be able to look at if it was possible to get that down even lower. We did do that initially, letting them know that 17.5% was the budgeted amount that we had put in our budget, and that was something that we were hoping to be able to get for a rate. And as you know, they did undertook that information. They came back at 19%. There's a big difference for them between 23.87% and 19%. As we work with Shelley Paulus, by no means is there a guarantee that at all that they would move even lower than the 19%. But I don't think there's any harm in asking to see if that could be something. I would look at more around the 18.5% to see if that could come back to be able to lower that. If we were to lower that from 19% to 18.5, if that's something that Harvard Pilgrim said, listen, if you're willing to do 18.5, we sign and get everything all signed, sealed, and delivered, that would be an additional savings of $33,947. If we're able, if that's something the school committee wishes to do, and it's successful, Harvard Pilgrim could come back and say, thank you, but 19% is as low as we look at it with all the numbers that we have.
Can I interrupt you? Can you just repeat that number if they were, if we went no-bid, but asked them to counter, or we countered at 18.5?
Savings of $33,947.
Actually, can you also just repeat the number for the emergency room decrement?
Yeah. That would be $20,368. Both of those, right now, are very -- they're not finalized. That would have to be something that we would obviously work through the SFT with in doing that, if that's what we choose. If you look up on the screen, just based on the two decrements and the 19%, if we were to go with that, we do have a reduction in health insurance from our original 17.5% placeholder by $38,670. So, if you look at all, the roller coaster that we've been on, the 17.5% to the 23.87% to the 19% to the decrements, that still costs us a savings of $38,670 from what was in our initial budget. Cheryl, anything to add in terms of, or correct me in any mistakes I made in terms of explaining that?
The actual, if we got 18.5%, it would actually be a savings of $38,162.
You kind of lost me there for a second. So, the white net change in health insurance since 1/29/24, that 38,670?
Yep. So, that's the 486 less the 525.
Well, let me explain. It's the 19%. It's 19% and the two decrements, decrements two and three. You add the -- you add those all up, and it brings it down 38,670, which is less than what was the original 17.5% that we had as a placeholder. Is that correct?
Yep. And then, with crossing our fingers, and if the school committee, everybody agreed to go down, we would then have another 38 after that.
Yeah. If it went down to 18.5.
If it was able to go to 18.5%, if Harvard Pilgrim agreed to that.
Right. Which is not on those numbers.
Because we don't know if that's concrete.
And then, if, after talking, you know, with SFT and a little bit more discussion about that, the other decrement that we were talking about for the ER, that would be an additional $20,000.
$20,360.
So, neither one of those numbers are in that 38,670?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm waiting for direction this evening before I go to Harvard Pilgrim to see if we can counter at the 18.5%? Or if this is something that I think the school committee is interested in going out to bid? Out to bid, looks like that that's a minimum of, right now, of us, of a three-week process. We have it all ready to go. We'd have the information that would release out. Companies that were interested in bidding would have three weeks to get back to us. In talking with Shelley Paulus at Acadia Benefits, we also need to build in some time for either questions that come back, or companies asking for additional information. So, you're now looking at probably a month. You also are looking at a landscape out there right now where you're looking at a lot of, I think, uncertainty. We just received today, remember, our custodian group and our administrators, small groups are on the MEA insurance to the benefits trusts through Anthem, and the information that we received today, they're looking at a 17.89% increase across the board for them. That's before they then start going in to use any reserves or different things that way. But that also speaks to, the challenges that we're seeing in Sanford are not unique to us. I also think that you're across that. And then, the question is, are you going to get anybody who wants to bid to come in there based on where our numbers are in terms of our high-cost claims and other increased costs?
So, just to, just basically to reiterate from my own brain, that if we were to decide to go to, sort of like, to go out shopping, we are not going to essentially get those numbers back till early April at the earliest, which would not help us with the budget at all, and with a good chance that we would, because if we were to say, oh, shoot, these other companies are coming up higher, we want to go back to Harvard Pilgrim, they're not going to give us that no-bid of 19%. So, we are going to be looking at a 23.87, because they're going to say, thanks, but no thanks.
That's what I would recommend to cover ourselves would be, what we know if we go out to bid is the 23.87.
Right.
That's what we would want to build into our budget, with the hopes that whatever we get is going to be less than that, and then, the other risk we have is, would it be less than the 19% that we have on the table as a no-bid offer for?
And then, I would add that going to shop around with the other companies, knowing that a lot of insurance companies right now have already changed decrements, I mean, every person I talk to that doesn't have, I mean, all the decrements are like tiers or ER, everything's up, everything. So, we would assume that even shopping around, those decrements would be changed without even us even asking for it. It would just be done, because that's just standard right now, is what's happening.
Yeah.
But I'm looking at you, Cheryl, just because you've been making the calls.
I'm sure they're going to put in, we'd put in the options we wanted, and they would tell us yes or no, or they would give us other options if they cannot fulfill that one.
Okay. So, I guess I'll just try to get consensus too from everybody on the board. In a sense of bid, no-bid.
I didn't want to cut you off, but I think what would happen is, that back and forth, we would obviously, as we put our plan out, try to get a similar plan as we have now.
Yep.
And so, with that, is going to be probably some of the back and forth that would happen in the event of, no, we can't do that, or this would be the alternates or pieces that we have, to kind of speak to what Cheryl was saying about that.
I feel like the 23.87, when we got news of the 23.87, that was kind of crushing, and that 486 taken out of the budget, that's, that's a lot of money. And so, nice work, you know, I think getting this down to a number that doesn't influence the budget as, as much, right? And I think it doesn't hurt to ask for 18.5, right? And I think if we can, if we have the opportunity to ask for 18.5, we have to do our due diligence. I'm reluctant to go out to bid, just because that 486, 486,000 number scares me a lot to what it would do to our budget, and what it would mean to all aspects. So, you know, I like the 19, I like 18.5 better, and unfortunately, there was some decrements that we had to make adjustments on, which is going, which is going to affect some staff, right? It's not without its own pain, but it, but I think it gives us a balance. This healthcare issue is real, and it's, you know, here it is being played out at this level.
And John, to mention that, what, the changes that we were looking at through those decrements are adjusting to the industry and adjusting to industry standards. So, I, when we look at that, by no means do we think that we are by ourselves in doing that. Those, in some ways, may, we may even be a little bit behind in some of those pieces of doing that. Nonetheless, still an impact. Yep.
Whoever else?
Yes.
I agree. I think that we do need to ask for the 18.5. It doesn't hurt to ask. I am concerned about going out to bid simply because we stand to lose a lot. We don't know how much we're going to gain, so, right now, considering where we are in general with the budget, I think it's, I'm risk averse in this instance. However, I would like to say that eventually, not right now, this time, but we do need to have further discussions about our health insurance situation and going out to bid next year, or making more changes, because the health insurance cost that we have right now is not sustainable. And I say that knowing how difficult it is. Health insurance is crazy. It's very expensive. I've got five kids. We've had, I don't know how many surgeries in the last three years, so, I understand about health insurance cost. But again, speaking, I'm digressing. So, speaking about this, 8.5 and no bid right now.
I, this is not the time to go out to bid.
Yeah. For me, I think countering back at the 18.5, and then, really, I think, you know, continuing that conversation with our, our union as well, and going from there.
A couple of things. One, health insurance has always been something that, if you look historically through, especially in education and teachers' contracts, it's been part of something they've had as a, as a benefit, that, as I said, it really hasn't adjusted. We've worked hard through negotiations to try to shift some of that cost more about a better balance between employers and employees. That's, that's obviously slow progress, because we're obviously trying to make sure that we're able to retain and attract our best employees in doing that. I do know that we, we did make some changes in the last negotiations in terms of some things around the HRA that was there, and do you want to share the, you know, not the specifics, I guess, but an overview of the conversation that you had this afternoon?
Yeah. So, I called Group Dynamics because they were our HRA provider. We had done a down payment when we started the program, so I was asking for my refund of my down payment, and she said, there is a long list of people who stopped doing HRAs this year. So, she is a little behind on getting them all out, but she is working on it. So, we are not the only ones that have eliminated the HRA. Also, just --
Because, remember, at the time, we, it was looking at an idea of capture savings, and through it, it just wasn't doing that, and that was something we were able to remove in the last, and be able to capture savings that way.
Right. And then, our last loss ratio report that we got, we're at 101.2% of premium, which is not good. And one of the things I look at is, how many times in the past 12 months you're over their threshold? And we're 10 months out of the 12, we're over their threshold. So, to me, going out to bid at this time would not be probably a better outcome because of that. So, I would caution if you did go out to bid.
Can I just, I feel like for the millions that are watching, and just to refresh our minds, when you say over the threshold, can you just remind us what the over the threshold is, and then?
Yep. So, when, in the healthcare side of things, because I came from that, the threshold is the amount of money they want to see their claims at, that percentage of premium, below that, and 86% was what we were told was their normal threshold, because they need to cover their overhead for all the processing, processing all those claims. So, we only have two times that we were under that 86% of premium, and the rest of the time, we weren't even in the 80s, they were all in the 90s and high 90s. So, that's the part I would, I would be concerned about. If there were a lot of them that were close to the threshold, going out to bid wouldn't be as bothersome for me, but because we're not near that threshold at all for 10 months, that concerns me.
So, can you just repeat, just remind me, you said the last month?
The last, the last 12 months is in -- The last, the last 12 months is an average of 101.2%.
101.2?
Yep.
Is the average over the last 12 months?
Right. So if you think about it, if their threshold is 86%, so you have 14% plus the 1.2 that you're over the 100%. So we are 15.2% over their threshold. That's why we came back with such a high percentage.
23.87. Yep.
That makes sense.
I'm just glad they want to keep us, to be honest.
Hey, hey, hey. No, we, we're desirable. We're desirable. And I'll make sure that they understand that.
Okay, I take that back.
When we go back to look at it. Okay, so I think what we'll do is we will work on, I'll follow up and try to say if we could get 18 and a half percent as that offer and we'll have the two decrements in place and we'll continue to work on that third decrement to see what, what progress we can make there. The hope would be that we still would be potentially having more savings. All right.
Can I interrupt you for one more thing? Cheryl, when you were just saying about the HRA and that our deposit, is that what you said?
Yes.
What, just out of curiosity, how much are you anticipating for a deposit to be returned to us?
Just $10,500, but it's not, it's on our receivable for us. We just had it sitting there. We knew that it, you know, whatever.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So you had to pay an amount so that they don't hold your claims until you pay them type of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So if we could go to the next slide, this is, we had a couple of different slides ready, but this is the one that we had in the event that the school committee was going to be able to move in that direction. So I'll start by saying, remember, for every 1% of expense in our district, that equals 3.2% for taxation increase, okay? And then when you're talking about rough numbers, 1% of expense is $648,055 and 1% of taxation is 176,432. So the budget that we presented after we went through all of our procedures here in the, in the school department as far as reviewing all the budgets. And we, as I mentioned, this was a budget that everyone knew was, needed to be leaned with the, the different impacts that we've had. We were really coming with an idea of trying to hang on to what we had. This was hang on to what we had. We had a budget of an expense increase of over $5 million. That equaled out to a 7.8% increase and the taxation was 14.1%. As we dug into that budget, you'll notice that there were really, at the time, there were only three new positions that were going to be added into that budget. One of those was for a multilingual language, multilingual learner teacher. And the other one, the other two, one was an interpreter of the deaf and the other one was an assistant director of special education. As we went through our budget, we showed how through the formula, the ED 279, the essential programs and services formula, how much subsidy we were receiving in those areas of multilingual learners and special education. And we feel that those positions are needed and they're justified. And you also see that we've got the subsidy, preliminary subsidy to back those up. That's really the only change from really just a turn the page. I talked about holding on to what we've got. So we came out to trim the budget further. On February 10th, we were able to make reductions in 119,847. Our attempt continued to be able to maintain programming and maintain staffing. Then you saw on February 20th, we saw the health insurance increase of, when the renewal came in at 23.87. So that jumped us back up after going from 7.8% expense increase to 7.6. That jumped us back up to 8.4. Last Monday, we did make some additional cuts through the budget. Those cuts totaled $263,746. So that knocked us down from 8.4% increase in expense to 8% and knocked taxation down from 16.4% to 14.9%. This evening, we did recommend cuts of $23,000. That bumped us down from 8% to 7.9% for expense and it knocked taxation down to 14.7% increase. When we look at the health insurance, by going down to 19% and taking the two decrements, that brought us down to 7.1% expense increase and it also brought us down to a taxation increase of 11.7. That's currently, right now, where we stand. There's also the understanding that in our budget workshop last Wednesday, we were discussing also looking at ways to bring our budget down. And some of those were surrounded in protecting what we've got. Some of that was in the areas of looking at, for example, the paid family medical leave. That's impacting us for $149,000. We're looking, and that's a hit. And that's something that, that's not part of the turn the page. That's something that is an, is an increase for us. And so we're looking at potential ways to be able to address that, minimize that. There are options out there, but it would require us as the school department, working collaboratively with the city, to be able to go out to private insurance, to privatize that in terms of the savings of the 149,000 for contributions. There would be probably some cost for the premium and for that. And so in working with the city, we do have a meeting set up with city personnel, as well as Cheryl and I, as well as an insurance company for us to be able to dig into that deeper. I think there's some concerns that what is it going to mean for workload, increased workload, if that's something that we're going to take on? Just some uncertainty around that, that we wanted to get those questions answered. That meeting is scheduled for March 17th. So that's something right now that there's also some potential savings out there with that as well. And then I also know that at our workshop on Wednesday, we also had some discussion around Lafayette School. Lafayette School is currently covered, carried in our budget. It has been carried in our budget. We have not used Lafayette School in a number of years. It was closed when we did our reorganization of our elementary schools and our construction projects. We did hold on to it during the pandemic where our partnership with the YMCA was working there for people to be able to utilize that for families who were not able to be home with their children for remote learning. And I know that the school committee last spring, we voted to turn that back over to the city. And as we've been working with the city, the challenge at that time was it was something that was carried in our budget. We've been working collaboratively with the city to be able to come back and look at existing uses of Lafayette School, knowing it is an asset and a resource in the sense of what were things that might be able to come back to meet our needs and also look at being a positive impact to the Lafayette community. And so as we look at that right now, we did a preliminary study that the information has come back in terms of costs to be able to see what things might have to happen for code upgrades and things of that nature. And I know that that money came back and there's, there's a cost to that. And I think there's concern that the budget that we have is very tight. So that was something that I think people were also talking about with the idea of knowing that our enrollment in Sanford has been relatively steady with that. I think there's always been some concern about getting increased enrollment and space, but also knowing what we would need to do to bring that building up to code and the expense around in doing that and knowing that we do have space in our elementary schools, that that may be something right now that, under these circumstances, it may not be in the school department's best interest to hang on to this. So that was something that was discussed last Wednesday. I don't know if other people have other thoughts or comments around that.
What was, did you say the total, what that's costing us? I can't remember. I thought it was 47, 50 something I saw.
For Lafayette?
Yeah, for Lafayette.
$53,207.
I mean.
And that's really, in a lot of ways, bare bones, right? Just a.
That's electricity, heat, keeping the elevator running, plowing.
And then, sorry, remind me again of the Family Medical Leave Act savings? Okay.
You do every time.
Like almost, almost 200. 199, is that what I'm getting at? 190,000 total?
Close to 200.
And, and. Well, Cheryl points out, I keep calling paid family medical leave 149. It's actually 146,002.
And I'm just trying to catch you up on, on the Lafayette School. So the, the school committee turned that over to the city. So as, for, for citizens, it's still on, we're still, there's potential, there's potential revenue there too, in, in a sale of that building potentially, or a rental of that building, or whatever the city does with it. So, I mean, there's, you know, the 53,000 to keep it, keep the lights on, keep the, you know, but then there's, there's other, there's potential there that's, you know, for a school like that, I think, right?
Yeah. And the, the, the city has not accepted it yet because of, as I mentioned, it was, they weren't, they didn't have the budgeted funds for that. We did for this year. So we've been working collaboratively with the city to try to see what can come in. I know that even though when we had it, we helped run the warming center with that. So I, you know, we've continued to be good partners with that, but I think the timing may be now in terms of if it was something for us to be able to look at for that.
I mean, it's kind of a bummer that we can't just say, no worry, no worries, we'll keep it and then we'll put it on the market ourselves and then take that income from selling the building. But that doesn't work that way.
No, and there's, there's risk there probably too with that.
Take those risks.
Can we have conversations with them now for them to take it back?
Yeah, I think one of the things is, the, the question is, does the school committee want to take action right now into our budget and be able to remove that from the budget now? That, that's something they've looked, to be able to look at it in our sense for it. I don't know how people feel about that. I know we had some discussions that for us, this is a very tight budget. We're trying to hold on to what we have. So there's some areas that we would go to first before we went to, to start impacting programming and, and directly impacting students.
And that's, that's where I, I fall. I, I think that we have to exhaust all possibilities before we start impacting programs, staff, that kind of thing. And I think this is, you know, 53,000 isn't going to move the needle much, but it's something. And then I, I do, I think there's value in that school building too, whoever owns it. We're all residents of the city. So if it, if, for example, it does get sold, that, that could go against reducing taxes as well. And, you know, in, in an ideal scenario, I'd love to keep it and, and utilize it, but it's just facing a budget like this, we have to exhaust all possibilities, unfortunately.
I would agree. It's, it's time to give it back.
And, I mean, basically for this, almost $200,000, we're essentially waiting for a green light or a conver, like, right? Is that where we're at?
Well, right now, we do.
We're on hold.
We're on hold for the paid family medical leave. My concern would be the timeline of improving, approving our, city council approving our budgets, April 1st, April 8th is the latest. The meeting on March 17th, our hope is we could have some turnaround time to be able to do that. Lafayette could be something that if we were able to put that into the budget we, tonight, that we're going to be able to approve. We might be, do you, can I add with?
Put it up?
Nope. The calculator, can you calculate what that may be in terms of what, what that would bring things down to? We already have, thank you.
It's like she reads your mind.
So if we were to remove the 53,207, that would get us, our expenses down to a 7% increase. And on the taxation side, if we took 53,207 down, that would get us to 11.4% on the, on the taxation, on the taxation side.
So for me, as I, I've said, 11.4% is really just too high in taxation. I don't think that, you know, we've put enough up there. And just digging through all the different numbers, I just kind of want to mention again, and I know a lot of the positions are doing multiple things, the 1.2 million in ESSER funds that we have rolled into this budget, that I do still think is not a sustainable model. Included in those positions, it's my understanding, we do have opportunity to have a third party cover some of those positions or some of that expense. I'm not sure what that total savings is to taxation, you know, or what might be considered if we kind of restructure these programs back into a third party. My opinion on that third party also is it's covered by our taxes already. As I mentioned multiple times last year, I think we are, are paying for those services twice with main care and the opportunity for a third party to have coverage in that payment from programs that were already federally or state taxed on. So that's like a double dipping of our tax dollars. So I know that's not, I'm not speaking on behalf of the school committee. It's not a consensus conversation that I'm having. It's just my own personal belief and based off of the budget from last year as well as just looking at this budget this year. Another opportunity that I, I've kind of been wondering about that actually hasn't, I don't even think been mentioned, but as I was looking through my paperwork, we talked about restructuring the ALP program last year. I know, in my opinion, I have no interest. I think what that program is doing for that student population is kind of miraculous and I have no interest in discussing, you know, the removal of it. But can we do a half a teacher in and out? Is there any little bit of savings there just to get, again, because that 11.7, 11.4% increase to taxation, in my opinion, is just not responsible. And then something we're adding into the budget this year was the assistant director of special education. Again, this is just things that I'm digging up kind of personally here, I think. I know we're going to need all those, a lot of those hours when we do take on that CDS piece, you know, and that's coming legally by law, that's coming. But is there a way to utilize that position to have savings elsewhere? I, may not be an option, but for me personally, I just don't, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with voting through an 11.74% increase to taxation. And I don't know thoughts or if we have any, you know, ideas. I mean, I think when I do some, some calculations, you know, what would 200,000 save us? What would 253, I mean, just, I don't know where we would be with, you know, cutting back, you know, X amount or, you know, just getting a better understanding of how we get that 11.4% down.
So just to, for some, get some numbers here, that if Lafayette was to be removed from the budget, what that would mean was we started at a budget of 7.8% increase in expense. That would get us down to just over $4.5 million and that would be a 7% increase in expense. We started at 14.1% in taxation. That would get us down to 11.4. Just if people look at it, last year, the budget that we delivered to the city council, the initial budget that we developed to the city council, that had a 6. initial budget that we developed to the city council, that had a six point three percent increase in expense and eleven point one percent increase in taxation. Now, if you look at that, we've talked about some of the impacts that we have around paid family medical leave, health insurance, some of these pieces for us that right now are adding to us already, just for us to be able to turn the page. One thing to remember is, our valuation continues to go up in Sanford, and our valuation has gone up even after the adjustment of the mill rate. We are six hundred thousand dollars less in state subsidy coming to be able to help us be able to come back and do our budget. So if you were to look at that six hundred thousand and apply that to where we were right now, now, and took six hundred thousand, you would see where we are is very similar to where we were last year to the budget that we presented to the school committee. Because a lot of that is, as I said, a lot of this is trying to hold on to what we've got to. It is the idea of trying to be able to turn the page. Anything that we're asking for in terms of addition, I think is well supported in terms of both on the special ed side and that. What Melissa mentioned, I think there's some things that we, you know, waiting to see. I expect that the budget that we have is probably going to have to, is, as it stands, would not be able to hold up, and we'd have to go back and look at things. And if, if Melissa's talking about the third party situation, or some other restructuring, or also around special education restructuring, I think if there's one thing this school department has proven and demonstrated, we're not afraid to do that. We are not afraid to do that. I am concerned. We are always balancing what is in the best needs of our students and our staff with what is the impact on the taxpayers. And I am really worried that if you look at it over time, unsustainable system that was already coming in that I would feel was that basic and is that minimum, you're going to continue to be able to, to, to take away from that. And that, that would be my concern. I'm not, I understand the impact of this budget for it and, and doing that, as we try to be able to balance that. But I'm worried that this has swung to the idea that now, the changes that we have, any changes going forward with this, I think you're going to see, are going to be really impactful for our students and staff.
So when you're talking about valuation, I remember a few years ago when evaluation, we don't really get those numbers for a few weeks, is my understanding. And I want to say it was two years ago, I'm looking at Paula, just because she was here, it was two or three years ago, probably three years ago maybe, what, where the valuation that we received was close to a million dollars. It was like nine hundred and change. And we gave that back to the city. Three years ago, correct, Cheryl?
Twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. And so, you know, I am hopeful, just in what you just touched upon, and, you know, we can't assume, but I am hopeful because of, you know, just what's going on in town and new homes and businesses that are, are still coming, and that we will get some valuation that we can use towards this budget that will help lower it for sure. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that.
I'll jump in. And we did that last year because the budget that after the city did put in, and what they put in was new valuation, right? The impact of new valuation, that got us down to a tax increase of two point four-three. So remember, those numbers still right now don't have that piece of it, with it. And I do point out the idea of, for many years, valuation, how it works is, there's a state of main average for valuation. And if you're above that valuation, you get impacted. And for many years, Sanford was not above that. But after we did give, when the state decided to fund education at the full fifty-five percent, we did give that, those savings back to the city for tax relief. What it did is it created a cliff for us when we started our budget the next year. And that was compounded because of the valuation changes now that we, instead of not, in receiving subsidy for being below the valuation, now we are above and we're losing subsidy with that. And it's been going on. And, and like I say, that is not to point fingers at anybody. That is, that's the reality we live in. We pay very much attention to the essential programs and services model. For us to be able to do everything we can so that if the city offers what they can, what they're supposed to do on their part of that, we'll be able to maximize that. But as you know, if you start paying for things to go above that, it's going to be impactful. So we've done our best to try to manage that and really doing it with, with minimum. As we've talked about in the, before, when you look at our per pupil expenditures, when you separate SRTC and CTE, you take that out, and you also take out debt service coming back, that gives you a real apples-to-apples comparison. And in doing that, we are twenty-four out of twenty-four. And, you know, that's something that I think is, we've been doing very well to be able to operate this way. Right now, anything else that comes back into cuts are going to be further going into the impact for that.
Cheryl, can you just let me know, what's the number? If we take, so we're saying, if we take out the Lafayette school building, we're at four million?
Four million, five hundred and sixty-seven, nine, four, four increase.
And we started at five million, sixty-six, right? So, and then our turn the page was four million, four twenty-eight at the beginning. So essentially, well, we're almost exactly five hundred thousand dollars less is what we've cut in total.
That's what the school committee, exactly, Melissa, just under five hundred thousand is what the school committee has cut initially from when the budget was presented back at the beginning of, end of January, beginning of February.
So I guess, just because this notes here, you know, just the twenty-twenty-one budget versus now, there was, there's been a twelve million, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollar, eight hundred and forty-nine actually, twelve million, eight ninety, eight forty-nine increase. Adding this in gets us that, since twenty-twenty-one, we're now going to be at a seventeen million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase in taxation in what's that, four years. That's, that, see, and that's, I guess, that's just where I'm coming from on, this doesn't seem sustainable, and I think we have more work to do.
I think that was the expense increase, not the taxation.
Yeah.
I'm like, oh, no.
That's where I was wondering the separation of, because we also receive a two point seven million dollar revenue increase this year. So it's like, well, how much of that is, that's, that's where I, thank you for clarifying that.
So if I, you know, we've made some, some cuts that I don't even like, and I don't think any of us do. We did hold our nose, wash our hands, and, and make some cuts that were, that are pretty impactful already. And they're, and they're up on the board, and, and they affect people directly. We still have the Paid Family Medical Leave Act to go through. We're hoping that, that, that valuation will, will help us. And we have to remember that strong schools create strong valuation, right? That's a reason for people to move to this community. That's a reason for people to be in this community, to want to be in this community. Some of the most positive things coming out of the community are coming out of these schools. And they're, they are an asset. We're starting to look at some of these, these cuts, and I, I just, you know, when we talk about, you know, social workers, when we talk about alt ed, when we talk about IEP coordinators, special education directors. So these are some of the most disadvantaged, you know, populations in our community, and often the ones that won't have a voice. They won't be here, sitting in the seats and advocating. We really have to, we have to look out for them. Because if we eliminate these positions, the need, the need's not going to go away. The problem still is going to be there. And, and it's going to fall, you know, I, I don't even know, I'm not a classroom teacher, but it's going to fall on those classroom teachers. And it's going to result in increased classroom disruptions, I'm guessing, and, and safety issues and concerns like that. I mean, these, these, these positions are needed in Sanford, Maine in twenty.
Information that we had for athletics. And so that was something that we dug into. One of the things that the school committee brought up was, if we're going to be looking at it through athletics, we probably need to expand that window beyond athletics, probably also into the arts, music and theater, to be able to look at that. We also did some rough estimates of what that would look like in that there may be a scale for people who might qualify for free and reduced lunch in terms of economically disadvantaged and what that piece would be able to look at. So we, I want people to know, we did look into digging into those. Cheryl, do you want to list at least some of the rough numbers that we came up on that?
So for four hundred and thirty-three kids in the high school play sports, it would be approximately twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars in revenue. But that's a little bit, sort of a guess. Because we know once they have to pay, some people may not play. So we estimated the free, free and reduced lunch based off the current, and that may go up if they know that they have to, that will determine what they pay for, always receive those forms. Because it's just, you know, people don't want people to know at that age.
And so then, if you're also looking at marching, music, the music programs, looking at the theater programs, you'd have some other numbers with that. I, I don't want to speak for the school committee, but I think people were looking at balancing that out in terms of what the, what the revenue was against the potential cost of the impact, I guess, in terms of that. That, the understanding was from the school committee that that was not an area to be able to push into further, looking into to try to be able to find savings. But I'll open to any comments that people have about that.
Well, I think that there's decades of study that show that physical activity actually increases a positive impact on mental health. So I don't believe hindering students, especially the ones that are most vulnerable in our community than shying away from, you know, doing sports, as well as freedom of expression. Your arts and your music is also another huge benefactor to those students as well. So for me, that's just counterintuitive, counterproductive. I don't think that's going to have a positive impact on the largest population. I think somebody said like six hundred athletes, or I don't know the number, Amy. Amy would know that number quicker than I would.
I feel like it was, but this sheet that I have doesn't reflect that, those numbers. So I think with, when you're talking about.
Maybe middle school and high school.
Yeah. So when we're talking about the, the high school is four thirty-three, and then the middle school, I think probably equaled.
Yeah, and they didn't have that broken down, and they couldn't tell me how many were multiple sports.
Yeah, because I understand, there's a number of those kids who are, yeah, there's a number of those kids that are playing more than one sport. So you'd probably have to say, is that going to be a cost per sport? Or would there be a sliding scale if you were able to come back and, and look at that, you know, and how that would be structured?
And for me, I, I, you know, I think the more we, like, I was actually kind of shocked that the gym class was no longer year-round, you know, when my kids got into middle school, especially in that age group. I think it's like two-thirds of the year. So it's not like it's minimal. But when I found out they were switching at a gym, I was like, wait, you need to be running around every day, because you're nine. So, so I would, I would like to see, you know, more towards those types of programs versus less.
Yeah, I, I do agree with you on, on the pay-to-play, you know, it, we have, we have to do our due diligence to be asking about everything just because we are so tight. And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic is the focus, and then everything else on the side. So, but I agree, you know, it's, yeah. I think, you know, just going back to what we've said sort of the past few weeks, and I apologize for just repeating myself and repeating what Matt said. But, you know, it, it just, you know, we're all losing sleep over here. We pay the least per pupil out of twenty-four surrounding areas. That is not a prize that we want to be. The city doesn't want to be. We have beautiful schools. A lot of effort was put into these beautiful schools and all the consolidations that was done. And, you know, any cuts that we would have to make, I mean, going on top of what John said, it already is going to hurt, you know, cuts that were made last year, you know, I think about, you know, some of them at the high school in particular, the attendance coordinator, that, that is burning over there. And then, you know, any additional ones, it's just, the bleeding is coming faster. And so I hate to be dramatic over that. But I just, we pay the least per pupil. I mean, I, you know, it's hard, hard to go from there. I don't know, I'm talking in circles. I'm not sure if anybody wants to tag out with me.
Where does, where, as we go forward this evening, okay, is there, Melissa mentioned the, her idea of it being too high for her liking. Are we, the idea to make some further actions this evening or, or not? Because we do have to come back and approve a budget this evening. And where do people stand on the Lafayette piece? Is that something that people are comfortable removing this evening to be part of the budget that we approve?
I mean, I feel like it's removed, we've already, it was voted to be removed. It's, we have to wait for them to accept it, to your point. So we've removed it, you know, so I don't, I, I don't know how this works, right? We've been, a year, we kept it after asking, I think it was just bad timing last year when we voted to give it to them in their defense. So, you know, I don't know when the right timing is to say, here you go, you know, because you would, you would hope that, you know, with all the work that you have done, Matt, and Steve Buck has done, to like, sort of like exhaust all uses of this building. I mean, a lot of conversation and effort and meetings has gone into, how can we salvage this building to be used for the schools of the city? It's just not a cost effective. There's nothing that we, as a school department, can afford to fix to use.
The question would be, do we remove it, take the fifty-three thousand out with that?
I mean, I would love to. We just have to make sure they're willing to take it. Right? I mean, yeah.
Yes, take it out.
Yep, no, I just wanted to, we were, I was trying to, there's a lot of moving parts here. So there's a lot of things that come into the consideration that we look at that. So I just wanted to make sure this evening, later on, that the number that Cheryl gives, we'll be able to look at that fifty, we'll, we'll have that as a, as a cut. So that'll get us to seven percent expense and eleven point four percent in taxation.
So just for, not clarification, but just for my own organization, we're talking about possible savings coming up or cuts or however, positive way of saying it, negative way of saying it, right? Savings or cuts. Lafayette, we're going to ask for eighteen point five for the health insurance. We are going to be discussing or the people that are going to be discussing more decrements. You said number four possibly, more discussion on that. And then more discussion on the Family Leave Act, working with the city. Is there anything that I'm missing?
But the only thing not included currently would be number four, right? The decrements and the, the Family Leave Act.
That's not.
The eight and a half percent's up there, and Lafayette, we're talking about, you're talking about Lafayette being up there.
Yes, nineteen percent's up there. Eighteen and a half percent is not up there. The fourth decrement is not. Lafayette is up there. Yeah.
Okay.
I think Paula's looking at, as we come into this, knowing that, what are the other ways that we might have for some areas? I think we do have a potential for the health insurance decrements and reducing that. Also, depending if it's going to work out for us in the city, the Paid Family Medical Leave Act are, I think, the main ones that we have. And then, you know, if, if the, if our, if we're directed to be able to look further for some cuts, Melissa, you've identified third-party alternatives, some restructuring of different things that we might be able to have around those areas for it.
Do we have, and I'm sorry, maybe it's back here, do we have the, getting it to nineteen to eight and a half number?
Nineteen and a half, yep.
Eighteen, sorry. Eighteen, sorry. We're just going to cut it to eight and a half.
It's just wishful thinking. So to get it to eighteen and a half, it'll be an additional thirty-eight thousand one sixty-two reduction.
And that would put us at, like, what, six point nine?
No.
Still at seven?
Yeah, because it's six hundred and forty-eight thousand, six forty-eight, oh, fifty-five to-
But that eighteen point five plus additional decrements, fingers crossed, would bring us down potentially.
You'd need like six thousand more.
Squeeze it. Okay, so I'm clear. Is everybody clear here? Are we, I mean, we can't vote right now. We're going to vote at the meeting at six. Just consensus, if we could just kind of say, are we comfortable with this?
The only thing that I'm not clear on is we have the authority to remove Lafayette from our budget without the city saying they will accept it?
Right now, if, the understanding would be, Lisa, and I haven't had conversations with the city, but my understanding was we released it, the timing wasn't right. Since then, we were looking at some other options. Since then, we're also getting quotes in of what it's going to cost. And I think what you have now is we don't have the ability to put any upgrades into that building. I don't want to speak for the city, but I I would also think that that's something that they'd have to also be able to consider. But I think for us, for us to carry it where we are in this budget, I do think it makes sense to move it back. At the end of the day, what, how that flushes out, it may be something through the city council deliberations. Somehow it may come back to us. I don't know with that. But I don't feel like for us, with what we're looking at to try to do, that it makes sense. We, that was the, I think, part of the discussion that we had last Wednesday, which to me feels like it makes sense for us to be able to remove that from our budget as we go into this process.
Perfect.
Thoughts? Final thoughts? Are we ready to adjourn this meeting then? Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second. Perfect. All in favor? All right, we will adjourn this meeting today at five forty-six. Thank you so much. See you at six.